The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Ed will now come to order. I ask you to please rise and I'm going to ask our student board member rep Cory Hader to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Gorski, may we have a roll call?
Ms. Armenio.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz.
Here.
Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Mr. Poehl.
Here.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yeah.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted January 9th, 2015, at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Could we please have the report of our student members?
Good evening, everyone. So, Woodland students held their advanced band and chorus winter concert this past Tuesday. Woodland students are also going to be having their annual Jump Rope for the Heart event on February 17th, and this is a national education and fundraising event sponsored by the American Heart Association, where children learn the value of community service and how to develop healthy habits. Also, Woodland School is proud to announce their participation in the Scripps National Spelling Bee competition. This is a school-wide spelling bee that was held on January 9th, and the top speller of the school advanced to the next level of the spell down, and this is going to be held at Monmouth University in March. So, in the high school last week, the MTHS DECA members had 45 students qualify for the state conference, which is going to be held in February, and these students competed in a wide range of business events, and 40 students received instructional awards for their outstanding skills in role plays or tests.
In addition, the Monroe Township High School's Future Business Leaders of America Club has also recently participated in their regional online testing. The results have yet to be announced, but the students who placed in their respective categories will be able, will qualify to test and compete at the state level. Additionally, the MTHS Builders Club has been conducting fundraisers particularly for charities such as UNICEF, the Ronald McDonald House, and the Rice Foundation. The MTHS mock trial team will be competing in the Vincent J. Bruzy Esquire State Mock Trial Competition in approximately two weeks, going against high schools from across the state. The MTHS Drama Club will be hosting a Murdering Mister Dinner Night next Thursday, which will also serve as a fundraiser to help support the Drama Club. And lastly, the Monroe Township High School's chapter of the Model United Nations has attended the multi-state conference last year. There were over 1,800 delegates from schools across several states, and this helps promote awareness in international political and socioeconomic affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory, and Nick. This evening, we will have a report on the upcoming PARC assessment. Mr. Ventrilo will give us an introduction.
I'm going to give an introduction right over to Dr. Alvich, who's going to give an update on the PARC test for Monroe.
So, the goal tonight was just to give an update to the Board of Education of where we are in our preparations as we are nearing the testing dates for PARC. So, one of the things that we focused on is making sure that our parents are informed of what is going on. Three of our supervisors, Mrs. Casalotto, Mrs. Rozell, and Mrs. Gasko, held three parent evenings in November, where they shared information with the parents about what our curriculum entails and how we've aligned it to the Common Core, and what the upcoming assessments will be looking, will look like. We had many parents attend each evening. Parents were given a chance to ask questions, and if they didn't ask their question that evening, they filled out an index card. The supervisors have since collected all of those index cards, come up with answers, and all of that information is found on our PARC website in the question and answer section. The presentation that they used is also found on our PARC website, so that information is available to all the parents, even if they couldn't attend those evenings. The PARC website also offers many resources for parents, students, and teachers with regard to the PARC assessments, and we are continuing to update that website as necessary. The parents also received an alert now with the PARC Frequently Asked Questions this past Wednesday, January 7th. It included an overview of the PARC assessment and updated of how, an update of how we were planning, preparing our students, the use of the PARC data, how it's going to be used specifically with regards to high school graduation requirements, that we just received an update from the state on, and an update, the general testing schedule, and an update on the technology requirements, and that we have met or exceeded all technology requirements in our schools. Parents also received a letter from building principals last Friday, January 9th, with a schedule for each school of the upcoming assessments. The assessments will be taking place, there are two sections of the PARC. The first one is the performance-based component that will be held between March 3rd and March 27th in all of the schools. The end-of-year component for grades 3 to 8 will be held April 27th through May 22nd. For grades 9 through 11, we were recent, we recently informed by the state that they will be held from April 20th to May 15th, which is a change from the PARC Frequently Asked Questions that went out to parents. And the reason that that change was moved, that the PARC assessments for the 9th through 11th graders were moved one week earlier was because they didn't want it to conflict with the AP exams. So, that was a change that the state has made. Some of the things that we're doing to ensure that our students are prepared, we have, all of our curriculum are updated with the Common Core, and our teachers are using those curriculum. Our supervisors are very on top of that with the teachers and making sure that the teachers have received the training that they need to do that. Our testing coordinator, which is Lori McConnell, and our technology coordinator, Reggie Washington, have attended the state training to make sure that we have all of the information that we need, and they are in the process of submitting the data for each of our students to the state. That deadline is actually on Friday. Reggie is ready to send it tomorrow, to make sure that all of our students have the accessibility and accommodation features that are required for them. All of our test coordinators, there is one test coordinator in each of our buildings, will be trained by Lori McConnell, and this training comes from the information that she's received from the state on how to implement the assessment, how to organize the assessment in the school, and on test security. Every staff member who will be administering the assessment must be trained through how, in how the technology for the assessment is used. They will have to be able to open the assessment online, close the assessment for students, and troubleshoot some, any issues that may occur during the time of testing. Mr. Washington will be doing those trainings the last two weeks of February. We have to wait until February because the PARC website will not be open for us to do that training until that time. But he, but we already have that schedule in place and ready to go, so our teachers, each teacher will receive two hours of training. There are two tutorials available online. One is called the Test Nav 8. The other one is an online tutorial that PARC has released on their website. We have informed teachers that they should be using them in their classroom with students, and parents have also been informed that they could actually use them at home with their children. So, those are the two, those are the ways that students will know how to navigate the assessment, and parents will be able to see what types of questions are going to be asked. Just a reminder, we've put this out in several different newsletters. We received a letter from the State Department of Education. It is posted on our district website. This came out October 30th. It is in compliance with our policy number 2622 that there is no opt-out session, opt-out option for any students taking the PARC. So, we are following the state's guidelines and our policy while we're doing that. So, just a reminder. Just a quick update on technology. Mr. Washington has ensured that all of our schools have met or exceeded the guidelines and the requirements from the, from the PARC assessment and the New Jersey Department of Education. All 3rd through 8th grade students will be using a laptop with, and they all have headphones. They already have headphones that they use for Rosetta Stone, so those will be the ones that they use with a microphone. All 9th through 11th grade students will be using an iPad with a keyboard attachment, as required. The internet circuit connection was updated to 500 connection. The firewall and main switch have also been updated to handle the extra traffic, so Mr. Washington is confident that we can handle the assessments as they come up. Any questions?
Mr. Prezioso.
Where are we getting all this money for the testing? Did the government give us any money for this? Federal government, state?
I'm going to pass that over to Mike for question.
In the 14-15 budget, the state gave us a generous $58,000 for PARC readiness.
And that's going to cover all the testing?
No. No, our costs exceed that, as the cost for many school districts exceed the state funding for this mandate.
And it's also the federal government that mentioned in one of the booklets that we have, that if we don't do the testing, we lose out on funding? This is the federal government telling us, correct?
Through the state, yes, state.
Through the state or the federal government?
It's through the state.
Could have sworn I saw federal.
Probably did.
Board President?
Yes.
There are no guidelines in the state budget software for the deduction of state aid pursuant to any opt-outs. Likewise, Mr. Mayo and I have looked into the waiver that was granted, which would protect the federal grant money under these circumstances. So, right now, there is no threatening means of taking away any monies from the district to penalize us. But that doesn't mean that the state could still drop the hammer in a way. We've seen state aid awards reduced in the past, so, but as of now, there's nothing in the guidelines or any legislation.
So, down the road, we'll be responsible for all of this money.
We're responsible for this money?
Possibility.
That's correct.
Mr. Kaufman?
Not that this has ever happened before, our government, oh, sure. Not that this hasn't happened before with a government-sponsored website, but this is a timed test, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, we're all ready to go. We can pitch to the state. What type of stress testing has been done on the state side to ensure that on these days when the exam is being given, if I'm a student and I answer my question and I click next, that if I have to wait for the system to respond, because we have millions of people accessing this website on the same timeframe during the same period, what are they going to do with load and stress testing, given that we've never done this before?
I don't know.
Okay.
They did the field test last year, and they were, they were using that as some of, they were supposed to use that. We never received any information back from the field test. We weren't supposed to receive any information or any data back from the field test. So, that was supposed to give them some answers to the technology question, but that was a limited number of students, so we don't know. Mr. Washington and Mrs. McConnell are going to another state training specifically on the technology piece coming up the end of the month.
Because there's, there really has to be questions asked when that training is had to make sure that this government agency is stress testing this as it would be impacted by having millions of people accessing this information at the same time.
And I can share that information with Mr. Washington, because I know they are going in two weeks.
And that'd be the, that'd be the next thing to do, Lou, is obviously that we can ask that question at the next training session, just as Dorie just said. It's probably, it's a very valid question.
Yeah, you're going to need to know what, it's good to know that we're ready to go. We need to know that the state's ready to catch it.
Mr. Nostine?
Just a couple of quick, quick questions. Mr. Kaufman, you have an excellent point, but even, even if the bandwidth and everything is fine and the websites are fine, are there contingencies should something go wrong?
The contingencies are, we have the month of testing, the month to test all of our students. So, if there's one day that it goes down or something happens, we can reschedule those classes to another time.
Okay.
So, there is, there is flexibility in that month's schedule in order to do that, and the principals have worked out their schedules.
How about contingencies if a student is partially completed and something crashes? The website crashes, the server crashes, we lose the bandwidth?
From what I know about the PARC assessment is it saves as the students are working. So, once they reload and go back in again, it should still be there.
But how about the time? The time, I mean, it has to be-
But that we can make adjustments for.
Okay.
There is a testing manual that PARC has put out that's this thick with all of those pieces. It has, it has-
And accommodations are in there.
Yeah, it has, you know, if this happens, this is what you do. If this happens, this is what you do. So, we have a manual. Mrs. McConnell is in the process of going page by page through that manual as she creates the training for the teachers and as she's creating our security plan for the district.
And I'm sure we must be somewhat ahead of the curve in the fact that we did field test this, so that that has to give us a big leg up compared to other districts.
Yes, I know so.
With regard to the evening that you had with the parents, could you kind of tell me, was that well attended or was that meagerly attended?
It was well attended. Probably each, one evening was focused on elementary school, one evening was focused on the middle school, one evening was focused on the high school, although parents were told that they couldn't really go to any of them. Some of the samples that the supervisor shared were focused, were more focused on those grade levels on those evenings, but parents really could get the same information if they chose to go any night. At the elementary level and at the middle school level, we probably had over 200 parents each evening. At the high school level, we had more. So, there were a lot of parents there, which was great to see.
Would you say that there was some, a consensus of concerns based on the questions?
There were, there were a few questions there. Most of the questions were how it was going to work in the, in the schools, you know, how are our students prepared educationally, not just technology-wise, but overall, the parents were just there to gather the information.
And just one quick question with regard to the costs. I keep hearing about the costs. What additional costs are associated with this other than the, I guess, the increase in the bandwidth, which is probably never a bad thing anyway? Would anybody know?
We're using the technology that's already in our schools, so that's, that wasn't an increase in cost.
The bandwidth was the bigger one. Reggie recommended a resolution to the board, I believe it was last year, increasing the bandwidth for cost, and the board generously approved that, so.
Did we have to get keyboards?
We had to buy keyboards. That was in the 14-15 budget, yes.
So, typically, just, so the bandwidth, and that's something that we can use forever. I mean, that's something, especially if we go with a new platform, that might actually help us make that decision. So, to me, I see the cost as not being, it's hard to just pertain that strictly to the PARC assessment. When bandwidth, it's, you know, just like everything else, you can never be too thin or too rich. It's the same thing with bandwidth, so, but, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? Mr. Braverman?
As you know, there's a movement for kids not to take this test.
Yes.
And as I understand it, in this district, if a student doesn't come to school when the test is given, they'll simply be marked absent. However, what if the student comes to school and refuses to take the test?
As has always been in the past, when we've had a student that have refused to take the test, they just sit there while the other students are taking the test. And that, we, and there's a, there's a form that a district, as a district, we would have to complete and submit to the state for that student. And we had that same, there was that same accommodation during New Jersey ASK.
And Marvin, we have a couple of things that are, right now, administratively, what we're trying to decide to do is that, a couple of things, and you mentioned this. If, let's say, a student was to come to school on the day of the test, but after the test was given, then that student would just be marked tardy as any other day. If the, if the student is being, you know, obviously, does not come to school, they're marked absent, obviously. The, at the last county superintendent's roundtable meeting, all the superintendents of Middlesex County agreed to do this as a procedure, is that there is no opt-out. Students are in the classroom. Whether a, there is no alternative setting, and I think that's the, that's the key, is that is there an alternative setting for that student? Obviously, if you pull the student out, do they go into the library, they go into the office, they go into another classroom, they go into the gym, et cetera. That is not taking place throughout Middlesex County, as agreed to by the superintendents as a group. The other thing might be that, and just to be considered, is that do you give the students who are opting out, so to speak, or not, or they refuse to take the test, do you give them the same technology? The concern would be, would they be a disruption then to the other students taking the test? So, I think administratively, we'll still have to make a decision administratively, whether we give and provide the same technology. So, if the kids are taking the test with a laptop, then maybe those students are also giving a laptop as well, too. Just so this way, they're not considered to be different. That's okay.
Just two, two points. Number one, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend one of these workshops at the middle school in November, and I just want to say it was excellent. The presenters were terrific. It was very well attended, good questions and beautiful answers. So, if you went, you got a real sense that we know what's going on. The questions that were raised were really excellent, and I'd like to piggyback on both the points there. If the state does have a problem, technology problem where the test can't continue or something, do we, do we have some sort of alternative schedule for the schools to fall back on? I mean, there's a lot of stress on students as well as teachers on a test such as this, and if it falls apart because nothing, that's our fault, but the state's, is there some sort of a schedule after a certain amount of time that we could fall back to so that, you know, classes can continue?
We can certainly, obviously, reschedule the testing. If we're going to experience that, let's say, that blow up as Tom and Lou just mentioned as well, too, then I would imagine the other districts are experiencing the same time that we are. So, that would be quite a debacle for the state of New Jersey.
And the, the entire school will not be testing at the same time. That's why we're given that block. So, it may be three or four classes at one time will be testing in each school. So, those, those teachers, those students would go back to their classroom and the teacher would pick up a lesson.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Question, the entire state is testing during that same period?
And during that same month, yes. But I just, in our schools, though, it's not the entire school at the same time.
And I would assume that there is, because the test takes multiple days for a given student. So, if a student, let's say, is there for the first day of the test and participates, but then is sick either on the second or third day, I would assume that there are makeup opportunities.
Yes, there are makeups that are, that are built into the schedule.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Alvich. Before we begin the public forum, I would wish to share with you the procedures. Many of these procedures are specified in our bylaws. As you know, we have two public sessions in most board meetings. The first one is designated for comments or questions specifically about the agenda. The second one is open to any questions or concerns you have. Participants are restricted to items on the agenda during the first session, and it would be helpful to us if the speaker can possibly identify the specific item on the agenda that that speaker is talking about. Other comments, questions, or concerns, as I said, should take place in the second session. Participants, when they come to the microphone, should state their name, their residence, and any group affiliation, if such should be appropriate. Your statement should not exceed three minutes, and this applies even to statements of a complimentary nature. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. You are not to address or question individual members of the board. Likewise, we ask that individual members are not to comment or respond during the public comment session. The cooperation of the public and adhering to these rules will allow for their input as well as provide an orderly procedure for making them. The board welcomes your input, and we would appreciate your cooperation. At this time, I open the floor to the first public session. Anyone wishing, wishing to speak to specific items on the agenda. Okay, it would appear that there are none, and so we will now move to the approval of the minutes. I would, I would move that we approve the minutes of the public meeting on October the 15th.
Still moved.
Second. Okay, it, I have a-
No, moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
I'm sorry? Oh.
Oh, I should abstain.
I wasn't a board member.
Jill de Mayo is abstaining.
So, is Mr. Ryback.
Yes. Also, we need to approve the closed session meeting, the minutes of that meeting that was also held on October 15th. Do I hear a motion?
No, moved.
Moved.
Second?
Mr. Braverman?
Comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, I oppose. My vote is nay.
Okay. Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Okay.
I abstain.
Abstaining. De Mayo and Ryback are abstaining. So, both minutes are approved?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. I will now call on Mr. Ventrilo to give the superintendent's report.
Mr. President, before I get into my report, a few items. I would like to share with the board that this past Monday, Mr. Gorski and I participated in a budget efficiency review. It was done by the Middlesex County Superintendent, Dr. Marana, and the County Business Administrator, Mr. John Nemeth. Other superintendents and business administrators were also there for their budget efficiency reviews. Superintendents presented and shared information to the county superintendent on district concerns, from facilities to curriculum, to programs, staffing, enrollment, park, transportation, and other areas. I must say, everyone was certainly quite impressed with Monroe and our programs. As for our budget, the efficiency review is a very detailed process, and Mike, maybe you could just share as far as you know with the board, the thoroughness of that budget efficiency review, from your perspective as a BA.
Yes, sir, Mr. Poehl. Thank you. The county budget efficiency meeting is required of districts, and there's an engagement in a comprehensive review of efficiency metrics, including those from the taxpayer-guided educational spending and others. At the conclusion of the meeting each year, the county superintendent of schools writes a letter to the superintendent identifying any areas that need address from a budget efficiency standpoint or any kind of fiscal concern standpoint. Last year, the district had two that were noted. Number one was the litigation with Jamesburg and the desire to get that to focus, because there was large budget bunnies that were budgeted for by Monroe that were not recognized in the litigation. And as everybody should know, that was settled recently with a settlement agreement between the two districts, whereas Monroe anticipates recognition of the full outstanding obligation from Jamesburg over the next seven years. And the impetus for that is the declining per pupil tuition rates for a high school student in Monroe. There's been a significant several hundred dollar decline in this metric each year, and that is basically freeing up money in Jamesburg's budget and their cap. In the past, it was not so much that Jamesburg didn't agree to the terms of the tuition agreement, but it was that, in 2010, the cap law came down, and they couldn't raise enough money in their budget to budget for that amount of tuition, even if they so choose. So, with our declining tuition rate per pupil, Jamesburg is going to fix their tuition at the 14-15 amount. Over time, as ours continues to decrease, it will create a variance, which will be overpaid to Monroe each year and then applied back to the rearage. It's a very intelligently designed agreement that took a lot of labor, and again, I thank Mr. Zarneski and the Jamesburg administration for their participation. So, that one was out of the way. Another metric with facilities and maintenance showed great improvement. In the past, we had some accounts that were very heavy, including snow removal and years back, and also energy and fuel. Over the last budget cycle, we've made great improvements there, and we're heading toward the state median. We also discussed a superintendent search. We also discussed the enrollment in the district, how we're picking up 200 new students each year. That is, that is an elementary school every two and a half to three years. We've been absorbing that within the budget, and John made a comment, John Nemeth, the executive county business administrator, that that is remarkable. We also discussed a superintendent search. We also discussed the enrollment in the district, how we're picking up 200 new students each year. That is an elementary school every two and a half to three years. We've been absorbing that within the budget, and John made a comment, John Nemeth, the executive county business administrator, that that is remarkable to stay within cap at that kind of demand and not go to the voters for an additional question and raising additional funds. We talked about the need to redistrict, that our south side of town has the mid-to-high 20-to-1 ratios for students to teacher, while at the Mill Lake Woodlands section of town, they're decreasing into the high teens. We outlined our plan for that, and the county office was pleased. We also identified the need that the district has to immediately begin planning for a bond referendum, perhaps to build a school at the south side of town, but also included in that is to address the facility needs because all but two schools in this district need roof address, and many need large infrastructure improvements such as boilers, windows, parking lots, et cetera. These are large-ticket items that cannot be accomplished in the budget. We've done a Herculean job by picking up roofs over the years, as much as can be fit in a 2% cap, but these larger items like boiler systems need referendum to fix. We talked about the cap, how we're able to budget within the cap, and in fact, years past, we actually budgeted under cap. We talked about state aid and the lack thereof, and the demands that's putting on our residents in this township, the burden that everybody is feeling, and the need for equity in state aid funding. We talked about taxes, we talked about ratables, we talked about an opportunity that's on the agenda tonight for us to refinance bond obligations, municipal bonds that the district sold to build Oak Tree School, and also the second phase of this construction. We talked about the park opt-out. We talked about an issue that a lot of districts are having trouble with, and that is Chapter 78. One of the highlights of our negotiations was that for the next three years' labor agreement, the MTA agreed to the 14, 15 Tier Four rates for the maximum contributions toward health insurance. And that has given us some planning ability in controlling health insurance costs. Related to health insurance costs, we talked about the Affordable Care Act and how that has caused the demand on our district, particularly Barb Adal, our benefits coordinator, to manage part-time employees' time. If it exceeds 29 hours a week, you're required to provide full health insurance. So that's a full-time job now, just managing that, and we're doing a wonderful job at that. We talked about our bringing of our attorney fees down, which is an administrative cost. We're saving approximately $100,000 with an in-house counsel, and in my opinion, the services have never been better. And again, Mr. Nemeth was very complimentary to Mr. Ventrello and the Monroe Township Board...
Yes.
...for really having the fiscal affairs in great order. And he felt that many of these items that I just went over were best practices that a lot of the other sending-receiving districts that were in attendance oohed and ahed about and really took note of.
They did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski.
Other good news, as you heard from our student board members just recently, our high school students participated in a DECA competition, and proudly represented Monroe School District. At this time, I'm asking that Zach Marada, our Applied Arts and Technology Supervisor, and Debbie Stepensky, the teacher and DECA advisor, please come to the microphone and maybe just share some highlights and talk about some good stuff about the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Ventrello, members of the board. For decades, Monroe Township High School has offered a very competitive DECA club in cohesion with our business department. Specifically, over the last 15 years, under the direction of Ms. Debbie Stepensky, our program has flourished, so I'd like to introduce her to share some of the most recent accomplishments.
Thank you, Mr. Marada. Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Ventrello. I'd like to first thank the board for its continuous support through all those years for our program, which has helped us grow. As Corey has already mentioned, our recent accomplishments were spectacular at the regional conference. These students now will move up to the state level of competition at the end of February, and hopefully, that competition plays for the international competition level. Over the years, our program does align, by the way, with all the co-content and 21st Century standards as well. Some other things that we've been able to accomplish is that I've tracked over the years scholarship opportunities and money that has been awarded to our DECA members, and to date, it's over $300,000. And we hope that by students continuing to participate at the state level, that does help increase their chances for scholarships. Recently, we attended a career day with the Philadelphia 76ers, and two of our students were awarded scholarships, one being Corey and the other one, Shama Shakab, as well. What else? We have state officers. Over the past 11, over 15 years, we've had 11 state officers. State officers are seven student members from throughout the state of New Jersey that actually do run New Jersey DACA from the student's side. They manage the state grant. This year, two of our students are state officers, I keep saying Corey, and Jenna Parison. And I'd also like to take this moment to congratulate both Nick and Corey for placing at the regional conference and moving on to state competition. This year, we also have...
Debbie, yes. Let's give them a round of applause.
They're great, by the way. This year, we also have someone that has just been approved to be a candidate for Central Region Vice President for New Jersey DACA next year, so we're looking forward to his campaign. The chapter's also just received international recognition for the highest level in each chapter, and we join 13 other school districts in the state of New Jersey with that achievement. And we also actively participate in community service. To date, for this year, we've raised over $3,000, with money going to the Wounded Warrior Project and the Seeing Eye. Okay, and thank you, and looking forward to your continued support.
Thank you, Debbie. And Corey and Nick, good job. Continuing with the good news, before I get into my report, I also would like to congratulate Stephen McKenzie. He's our high school special education teacher, but he's also our soccer coach, and Stephen was named NJSCA's Central Jersey Soccer Coach of the Year for the third time, so a big round of applause for Stephen. Mr. President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve personnel items A through Z by consent, roll call.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made, moved, and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I just happened to see something on our agenda, a personnel resignation due to retirement to Dr. Lynn Barberry. And I think Lynn was one of the first administrators that I've had the privilege of appointing as a board member when I first became a board member, and I know she's done amazing things for both, well, not for both, for, I blanked out of her school.
For Mill Lake School and the school district, Kathy. Yes.
For Mill Lake School, I know she's loved by both the staff and the parents, and she's going to be sorely missed.
Agreed.
Any other questions or comments on the motion, any of the items? I move that we approve personnel items A through Z. Roll call.
Personnel items A through Z, Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, personnel items A through Z passes.
Before I get into the next section, I'd like to also just add something what Kathy just said, is that, you know, through our board action, and just as a matter of procedure, the board usually accepts the resignations of staff as they embark upon retirement. And tonight, we actually have three staff members giving notice of retirement. Just wanted to say to the three of them, as a matter of fact, Dr. Barberry, Carol Giallo, Lisa Quinn, is that on behalf of the Board of Education, I just wanted to recognize them all for their years of dedication and service to the students and to the parents of Monroe Township. When you think about some of them, even Dr. Barberry, 13 years in Monroe Township, 31 years in education. Carol Giallo is a special education teacher, 30 years in Monroe, 38 years in education. Lisa Quinn, 32 years in education and 21 years in Monroe. It's obviously, it's been a career here, it's a dedication, it's a passion for Monroe students, so my compliments to all of them as they embark upon the next page. Mr. President, it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve board action items A through H.
All moved.
All moved.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Arminio?
On H, could you just tell me, oh, I'm sorry, I realize it. Clubs, there's only one club being put forward in H? Yes. And that's the Gate Club, which we've had a discussion about in the past.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Nostine.
Just a quick question on H. Was that through the curriculum committee, or was this...
It was. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Gorski, would you please do a roll call?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Poy.
Yes.
Mr. Board President, board action items A through H passes.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski, and would you please continue with the business administrator's report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Board President, if it pleases the board, I would just like to introduce one of the more material items that I'll bring to the board's attention, which is on my report this evening, which is the refunding of municipal bonds that the district issued previously to build Oak Tree School and the second referendum that was required to build Monroe Township High School. That was a, Oak Tree was about a $25 million series, and it was about a $42 million series of additional costs that were required for the construction of this Monroe Township High School. I provided information to the board this week that, in the past, we've refunded over $80 million for two bond series in the last five years. This has saved the district net interest savings over the life of the bonds of 1.5 million for the 2002 series, which was the initial one for this school, and 2.5 million on the 2003 series. I've been monitoring the 2006 Oak Tree Bonds for about a year. The benchmark for refunding, which is synonymous with refinancing bonds, is when the net present value savings exceed 3%. This has been teetering at that mark for a better part of a year, but as of recent, the long end of the municipal bond curve has really turned to our favor, and the net present value savings are almost 9%. That could save an additional $2.4 million of interest cost over the life of the bonds. The term of these bonds that are going to be reissued are not going to be extended, and the savings include all of the soft costs for the underwriting and the financial advisory fees on the bond counselor that's required for this process. There is no application to the local finance board that's required because we have a conforming schedule, and the savings are material. And there's another series that is now also teetering on the 3%, and that's the second series for this high school. That's right at about 3% net present value savings and could save an additional 1.4 million by refunding about $42 million worth of these bonds. As of right now, it's marginal, and we're going to keep our eye on it, so I'm asking the board to pass a resolution tonight authorizing the refunding for both through this introduction tonight, but we may not bring the second one to fruition, it depends on market circumstances. But certainly, the 2006 Oak Tree Bonds are ripe for refunding, and I recommend we proceed We're going to have, as part of the process, we're going to have to apply for a bond rating. Our last issuance of bonds, we had an A, A-minus rating, which is not the highest S&amp;P rating, but it's the highest rating given to school districts in this current state environment. So it's a very favorable rating, and my discussions with the financial advisor, we both expect that the rating should be maintained. What's noteworthy is, the first question that was asked by the financial advisor was pertaining to the Jamesburg Agreement. If that agreement was not settled, and if we had still an unclear, large revenue source from Jamesburg in our budget, according to our financial advisor, that could very much affect that rating and make it go down. At minimum, it would have been a disclosure to anybody buying the bonds. The next steps for the financing is, tonight, we're going to introduce the refunding bond ordinance that requires a majority of the members present in order to pass, according to statute, and according to bond counsel, the Jamesburg representative may not vote on those bonds because it's not one of those four statutory items. February 11th is the second reading and final adoption of the refunding bond ordinance and adoption of the bond form and sale resolution. That requires a two-thirds majority of the board. February 16th is going to be an electronic posting of the preliminary official statement. February 23rd is going to be the pricing of the refunding bonds, and the week of March 16th, 2015, is the closing on the refunding bonds. So that said, Mr. Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that the board action items A through O be approved by consent, roll call.
All moved.
Second.
Mr. Kaufman, second.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Nostine?
First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Gorski. This is the difference between a good BA and a great BA. Here's a perfect example of, in his spare time, like he's got so much of it, to basically, Mike, could you just reiterate how much the cost savings, without even the one that we're on the fence about? How much savings?
The Oak Tree series is a $25 million refunding that will save $2.4 million of interest costs over the remaining life of the bonds.
That's the kind of money that we're talking about.
I mean, that's... $150,000 off what we would otherwise ask the community to raise each year in the budget to finance the debt service tax levy.
That's fantastic, and I just want to, I really want to reiterate how much we appreciate this kind of work from you, because without this, a lesser, you know, BA, this would have just, it's easy to just keep going, but this is going to require effort on your part, extra effort, and that's why you're so appreciated here because of that. So thank you very, very much for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Arminio?
Mr. Gorski, I also would like to thank you for your efforts and keeping us sound in this way, but I just want to be clear about the, once you reissue the bond, we're not going to go for a higher year, the years, like in other words, the bond that you're going to be doing, how many years is left on that?
Approximately.
And are we going to keep that same years? In other words, we're not increasing the time, the payout for that?
It's a varying schedule. There are bonds maturing anywhere from months to years to decades, out probably over 20 years out for the series. And again, they're all individual series bonds with different denominations that mature at different times. The longer ones have a higher interest rate, the shorter ones have a lower one. We are not extending the term of the bonds in order to achieve any of these savings. If you were to do that, it would require application to the local finance board in Trenton, which we're not required to do for this transaction. So the term is not being extended. Another benefit of not extending the term, aside from the fact that it artificially will reduce your current obligation because you're just kicking the can down the road, so to speak. But another concern of that is, this district will be probably issuing new bonds for a new constructed school in the future, and this will allow room in future budgets to raise money and be responsible for taxes as this debt matures over time and falls off the schedule.
And we're not, we're not taking any more money out of these bonds, right? We're just changing the interest rate.
We will be borrowing a little more than the face value of the bonds to cover the financing costs, the bond underwriter, the bond issuance cost, there's actual certificates that have to get prepared, underwriting fees, bond counselor, financial advisory fees, they're all included in the savings, they're all very competitively priced, it's a professional services appointment for those, and as we have in the past, we're choosing the very So the actual bond cost is expected to increase slightly, but the net savings resulting from the lower interest rates that you're replacing those bonds with is still net present value savings of about nine percent, two point four million dollars for the Oak Tree Series, and it could be an additional one point four million dollars for the high school additional cost series.
Okay, so the savings is absorbed in that?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I just have one comment, and that is for someone like me who doesn't quite understand all the bond lingo. And when I first heard refunding, I was very confused, so I just want to check my understanding. I see this as we're refinancing our mortgage at a lower rate, but for the same number of years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that I understand. And that's going to save us money in years to come.
Significant money.
Great, wonderful. Thank you so much.
And I don't know, I'm sure if you have a mortgage, you probably have refinanced in this current very unusual interest rate environment, and you can imagine the amount of paperwork and time that goes into that, this is probably that times a hundred. There's a lot of work that goes into bond refunding. I've done two since being the business administrator, I did one with Wayne before, and it really eases the burden on the taxpayers for the financing of the school.
Good news.
Good news.
Have you gone through all the items?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski.
Yes.
Mr. Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovich.
Yes.
Mr. Nostine.
Is this for everything?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, yes, for everything, I recuse on Emma's and Mary.
Oh, then I'll, you know what.
Recuse on Emma's and Mary, so noted.
Mr. Gorski, may I say the same thing, Emma's and Mary? I thought we were just going on the bond.
So noted.
Thank you.
Mr. Preziosso. Mr. Ryback.
I vote yes on everything except L. I have to recuse myself as a member of the Boosters, but I would like to congratulate the Diamond Club on their efforts and certainly their contribution to our schools.
Good point.
Thank you. And Mr. Poy.
Yes, recusing myself on item M.
So noted. Mr. Board President, board action items A through O passes. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. Okay, I do have a brief president's report to make tonight. I also wish to thank the Diamond Club for its six thousand dollar donation for the purchase of a new scoreboard, and I too would like to add my congratulations to our DECA program. It seems that year after year, we hear of outstanding results, and it just goes to show how successful our students can be when they're given these co-curricular activities that extend their experiences in learning beyond the classroom. I would like to inform our board as well as the public that our Booster Club will be having a comedy night on Friday, January the thirtieth, at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Crescent Avenue in Spotswood at seven PM. The cost of tickets is twenty dollars per person, and the funds will provide scholarships for this year's graduating athletes. Soda and light snacks will be provided, but people may bring additional food. People will be sitting at tables of eight to ten people. Tickets may be obtained by calling seven three two, seven six three, nine five seven five, and I would urge our residents to attend this very worthwhile fundraiser. I too would like to commend Mr. Gorski for his diligence in keeping his eye on ways to save the district money. He seems to demonstrate this ability year after year, and we are certainly thankful for that. In the excitement of being elected president last week, I need to rectify an omission. I personally want to thank Kathy Koloponovich for the years that she served as president of our board. Much was accomplished during those years. I also wish to thank her for the assistance that she has already given to me during my transition into this leadership position, and I am confident that I can reach out to her in the future for advice. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Very nice.
I wish to update the public on the superintendent's search. Next week, on January twenty-first, the board will receive the candidates' applications and prepare for conducting the first round of interviews. Due to the nature of these meetings, the board will be going into closed session. No other business will be conducted. Then on February three, four, and five, we are presently planning on holding our first round of interviews. Once again, this will not be open to the public. And then on February ten, eleven, and twelve, we hope to conduct our second round of interviews and select finalists. Also, these interviews will not be open to the public. I realize that the process of selecting our next superintendent will entail considerable amount of time from our members, and I ask that we make every effort to attend these planned interviews. Of course, when you take into account that we have nine members on the board, and we also have administrators that could be involved, as well as our field rep from the New Jersey School Boards Association, it is not easy to schedule times and dates that will work for everyone. Nevertheless, whatever inconveniences this most important task may cause us, we should keep in mind that it is done for the benefit of our schools and particularly of our students. That concludes my report. We did not have any committee meetings, and therefore, I would assume that there are no committee reports, but please speak up if there are. Mr. Nostine?
I guess it's technically not an official committee, but it's the committee that I was appointed to for the, ex the technology committee going forward. So I just wanted to give a brief, a brief summary of where that stands. Basically, we had a tech expo about three weeks ago, it seemed like it was longer, but it was about three or four weeks ago. All the vendors came in, they presented the different platforms that we're going to be looking at, basically Microsoft, Apple iOS, and Chrome, Google. And basically, they presented the hardware, and they gave explanations of the software requirements and how each one was better than the other, according to them. So now, the next step is to determine, you know, what, where that fits into our, our future with the one-to-one initiative. I believe in two weeks, there's going to be another meeting at the high school again at three PM. I think Ms. Koloponovich is going to be there, too. And we're going to be basically going over, I guess, the results of that tech expo. One of the things that I did come away with, with, from the tech expo, is that at the last meeting, or at the very first meeting, we were kind of given the, the impression that the Chromebook was, was more bandwidth intensive than it is. That, that, we were, I was told from the Google representative that that might have been true originally, but now they're on, I think, version thirty-seven, and version thirty-seven, that is not really an accurate statement. So I wanted to correct, you know, correct that with the board, and basically Chromebook operating system is no different, really, from a bandwidth situation than any other. So we're going to be looking at all three of these, and we'll report back at that point to, to where we stand. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nostine. Is there any other board business tonight? Anyone else want to speak to any point?
Mr. Cory, if I may. I just want to say congratulations to Samantha McLeod in her new position as Assistant Principal for serving Brookside and Woodland Schools, so a round of applause to Samantha.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Ventrello, for bringing that to our attention. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter two-three-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, to discuss the following subjects: receive attorney advice regarding the code of ethics for school board members, and to hear our HIB, that is harassment, intimidation, and bullying, report from the superintendent. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I anticipate that this will require a maximum of thirty minutes, hopefully, at which time we will return and we can have our second public session. All in favor of this? So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Fine, we'll now go into closed session. Thank you.
Laughing back there.
The meeting will come again, will once again come to order. We'll now open the floor for the second public forum. Please remember that you have to state your name and address, and also, this portion of the public session is for any comment or questions about anything at all. Do we have any, anyone from the audience who wishes to speak? Okay, I don't believe I see anyone.
Go on the board now.
So I will close the public session. Our next scheduled board meeting will be on Wednesday, January twenty-first, at six PM here in the High School Media Center. The purpose of that meeting, as I indicated earlier, is that we will be going into closed session for the entire evening. We do not plan on conducting any official business because we're receiving the applications of the candidates for the superintendency, and we will be beginning to prepare for our first round of interviews. I do notice that the president of the Booster's Club is here. I hope I, you are the-
Mr. Firstis.
Okay, all right. So if anyone, though, has any questions about the Booster Club's comedy night, the lady sitting there in the third aisle, I suppose, waving her hand, she is here to answer any questions, and she is the one that's also handling the tickets. And your last name, I'm sorry?
Keano.
Keano, okay. Mrs. Keano is the one taking care of that. Thank you so much. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So moved, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.